The biggest things on the agenda we've already.
Discussed.
Discussed, yeah. You're not jingling. No, no, I didn't say anything. I just said, we've already discussed.
Discussed.
Discuss. I know better. I worked in the ED. I see Christmas lights going up already.
There's a group that's going around putting these little door hangers on saying that they'll.
Yes.
And and it's it's not that expensive and they'll store them, you know, for the year. Of course, that's assuming they stay in business for the year.
They charge for those, they better guards.
Pretty expensive.
Did anybody else hear the big booms?
Yeah, it's fireworks.
Okay, it's five o'clock. Six o'clock. Okay.
It's fireworks, Sullivan.
All right, I will call the November twelfth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting to order at six P M. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and also by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting in person at City Hall or by pre-registering and joining through Zoom. All city council meetings are broadcast live and can also be accessed through the city website. Thank you all for being here tonight. And thank you, Councilor Smith, for joining us via Zoom. You're welcome. That. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance. Councilor Myers, would you lead us tonight?
Into the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, Lord Saint, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. Sammy, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Bell.
Here.
Counselor Bowman.
Here.
Counselor Engel Brethson is excused absence. Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Wells.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Um, Mayor's comments, I will point you to the red folder. I will be Saturday, this Saturday at one P M. At Coburg Commons in the bookstore area over by the fireplace. And we'll be talking about city finances and budget priorities and what's ahead for the community. So if any of like to join, you may certainly join. Um, I'm hoping for a good turnout. So far, I've done two of these meetings and I've had a couple of people each time. But that's absolutely fine. That's how the message gets passed, so. Um, I'm I'm hoping there are more. I will have tea. I have it all gathered up, so. That will have hot water for tea. It'll be great. And if it's raining, we'll be inside. I do want to let you know we're continue to accept applications for both the Planning Commission and the Park and Tree Committee. And that's about all, except that I it is the dark time of year. And I will be honest, and I've already apologized to Counselor Bowman. He was trying to cross the street. And I did not see him until I was through through the crosswalk, and I think others did too. So it's a good reminder for me. Really be aware as we get these time changes and it gets dark and it gets rainy. We need to to really be watching out for people. Other people, I will say, did see him and stopped, and that was that was great. There were a couple of cars that went through after I did. So I was getting ready to walk back with the flags and close that off, but I didn't have to.
No one accelerated?
No, accelerated. No one accelerated. So, um, we have agenda review. Sammy, do we have any proposed changes to the agenda?
We don't have any changes, Mayor. Um, in your red folders, you do have the city administration report that goes under tab number seven, our agenda item seven, and then, um, the financial report, which is added on after the administration report.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
There is not.
Just moving right along, and then we're on to the consent agenda. So did any counselors ask to have anything removed or changed in in the minutes from October twenty-eighth? Or the that was the work session for the council meeting on the fourteenth? Any agenda item can be removed for separate consideration by any of you upon request. And you've all indicated there was not that request. So if you're ready, I will accept the, um, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Uh, Mayor Bell, this time I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes for the October fourteenth city council meeting and the October twenty-eighth work session that is presented.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bowman. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You, Counselor Myers. We have a motion by Counselor Bowman and a second by Counselor Myers. Ah, I cannot speak tonight. I apologize. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is under ordinances and resolutions. This is the second reading of ordinance A two hundred dash N and ordinance amending articles seven, eight, ten, twenty-one, and twenty-five of the Coburg zoning code to address the state of Oregon climate-friendly and equitable communities' rulemaking and other general housekeeping amendments. So, uh, the first reading and the public hearing was held on October fourteenth at the city council meeting. Is there anything that staff would like to add?
We're here for questions. Like, we had a robust conversation at first reading, and I think we also brought it forward prior, so hopefully council's familiar, uh, very familiar with the changes and, Megan can answer any questions you might have if there were. There were no changes uh, between at first reading, so first, the second reading is identical to the content of first reading.
And we did go over that in in great detail. Um, are there any questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move, I'll do that. I move to adopt ordinance A two hundred N and ordinance amending articles seven, eight, ten, twenty-one, and twenty-five of the Coburg zoning code to address state of Oregon climate-friendly and equitable communities' rulemaking and other general housekeeping amendments.
Thank you, Counselor Wells.
I will second.
Hey, we have a motion by Counselor Wells and a second by Counselor Bowman. Is there any council debate? Anything that anyone needs clarification on, any questions? We do have Ms. Winter here that can go over that, though we have gone over it in in pretty minute detail previously. No questions, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion or the ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. Well. And 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 I welcome counsel. I really cannot speak tonight. Can I welcome Ms. Winter back from Italy?
Yep.
She's bringing the Italian charm with her. And chocolate. Oh, yes.
Where?
No. It's all gone. Okay, under council action items, we have the Park and Tree Committee recommendations. And we'll have a staff report from Mr. Hanks. We did talk about this at our last work session on the twenty-eighth in in great detail. But we did feel like, um, we probably should bring this to council for a formal recommendation. So it is in the written, written record. I'll turn that over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mary. You took my took my intro. That was perfect. Although that's exactly what what we're here for, just to formalize that, and I think it's just to close the loop uh, between the advisory, uh, committee recommendations of the Park and Tree Committee uh, to council, and and we did have a great conversation about it at the work session. There are two, uh, there, uh, one motion, but but two parts, uh, kind of summarizing, the the two recommendations, uh, made by Park and Tree. For clarification, um, you'll you'll likely be getting updates on both of these, uh, one more formally than the other. The, uh, painted pillars temporary art installation, uh, concept that we discussed at the work session, that follows the donation, uh, policy. So, uh, staff will be working with Coburg Main Street, uh, the art committee is part of Coburg Main Street. So we'll be working with them to kind of help build out kind of the concept and make sure that, uh, you know, what they're contemplating, uh, actually works, uh, with a public space that, as we've talked about, is subject to quite a bit more abuse than someone's backyard art installation might be subject to and liability and all those things. So we'll work with, uh, the the that team or that committee. Uh, and you'll end up seeing that back, um, when it comes for formal, uh, donation. Because that's that's the point at which the the work that they're doing actually gets transferred over or accepted by the city. We then take ownership and the installation, all that stuff. So more to come on that. I think the 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 concept of the recommendation and the, and I think the head nods from from council at the work session were concurrents to the concept and moving that forward. Not not necessarily, uh, any any formal approval to just, uh, you know, go wild and 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 get it in there. It'll still follow a established process.
It is always hard to remember that public art is very different. It it is hard for me to remember, and I think for others, it it's held to a much higher standard than it is when we put things in our private yard.
Yep, a lot more, a lot more stuff we have to consider. But I think it's a great, great concept, and I I think it'll be fun to, uh, work through the details and and see where that comes, and then and you'll you'll see that back. And also, obviously, before you see it, there'll be a a Park and Tree Committee will will see that as well. So it's just a a multi-step process, but hopefully it's building blocks as we go towards a, um, you know, a project that is in in a condition that is acceptable, uh, and and be able to be donated and and brought into our, um, our park system.
The pillars at this point are a concept.
Yeah, I think there's still, you know, there's still, you know, development of the of the theme, you know, how many, how tall, how they're attached, you know, how they're secured, what the maintenance needs and requirements are, all of those kind of things. Um, and we just aren't there yet, but Park and Tree was supportive of the concept. And I think, you know, again, the idea of it being a temporary installation, we kind of need to think about what's, you know, uh, one year, two year, three year, how do we, you know, draw a little agreement about how that works and what everybody's understanding is for that? So, um, that actually gives us a little flexibility, knowing that it's, uh, you know, uh, temporary of, uh, in some shape or form.
Um, any council debate on that? Any questions? Concerns?
Uh, only that I support the recommendations. These are, um, formalizing what we've talked about and nauseam. It makes sense in terms of doing the pillars as a placeholder. I understand that that's not what the vision was at the start, from what I gather, and not the vision that some in the community may be expecting and it may be disappointing to some. However, realistically, it makes sense. It's a common sense recommendation. And it gives us necessary physical breathing room.
And and I I always have to, again, remind myself when I see things that they, no matter where we are, until we're at completion, things are a concept. And I've seen lots of concepts with sky, not here, but sky bridges and things like that over highways. And when rubber meets the road, you simply can't afford to do that. Or it just doesn't make sense to do that, so. You're you're right, Counselor Bowman. Some of community members, some may be disappointed. And I think it's probably our role to to work that through with them, to have those conversations that this was, this is temporary, this is a placeholder, and it gives all of us a a point in time to figure out what next steps are. Any other comments? Questions? Having none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And hearing no opposition, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Well, I thought that did somebody make a motion?
Well.
We'll just read it.
No, we didn't. And so thank you for that. Let's back up and let's make a motion.
We are efficient today.
I'm really gonna move us right on through, apparently.
Did you say that we're adjourned?
Didn't say, yeah. So there there is a motion. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor Bell, I move to accept the Park and Tree Committee recommendations as presented.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Bowman.
I'll second.
And a second by.
Mayor, I'm sorry that we need to be more specific. Couple suggested, but there's a lot of details and back and forth discussions on that stuff. In the staff report, there were a couple of different options.
Well, there's option.
One option there were.
Option two.
There there's two motion. There's there's two recommendations. It's one, one suggested motion.
Options.
One motion, one motion, two, two recommendations from Park and Tree.
I thought I understood.
I think for clarification, I think the 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 best course of action would be to, uh, to read off those, each of those recommendations. We give them in the record.
Oh, I, I'm.
Option one and option two.
Those aren't options. Those are, those are the two recommendations.
I.
Yep.
So I, um, sorry, let me.
We're just backing up here and restarting, and that's okay. We get to do do-overs. Here I.
I move to approve the following recommendations of the Park and Tree Committee relating to one, the approval of the. Wait, wait. Would you take over, Al? And I can't quite.
It's all right. Um, number one, indefinite delay in the installation of the fountain due to financial constraints and request for the installation of a paver surface in the area of the fountain to improve the aesthetics and functionality of the fountain area. Two, support for the use of the fountain slash paver area for a painted pillars temporary public art installation offered by the Coburg Main Street Arts Committee.
So we have a motion by Counselor Bowman as read by Counselor Wells. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Lehman. Is there any further debate? I will now call for a vote. Vote those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Is five to zero, five, five to zero unanimously. There we go. All right, now, having done that, and thank you all for your patience as we work through that. We're on to the administrative information reports, and Mr. Hanks will provide the staff reports on all of those.
All right, and I've got, uh, our esteemed Public Works Director here with me to go through some of the 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 more complicated ones. Um, so, yeah, in front, uh, for the administrative reports, the first is just a recap of the capital improvements plan, uh, the C I P. Uh, we'll talk about it in the look ahead here later in the administration report, but this is the kind of giving you a a recap of what we've completed, uh, just a real high level. Then in, uh, January, we'll have a work session where we talk about the new, the proposed C I P for the next upcoming five-year cycle. And then in February, you'll actually adopt that. So we'll be talking C I P three times. This is just the intro to kind of, um, uh, I I think notate accomplishments. We're looking for a page number?
Page three oh seven.
Yeah, I have a different, uh, oh, yeah, uh, three oh, three oh four and three oh five is what I have for the staff report. And then the C I P itself is just an attachment starting on three oh oh six oh seven. So the staff report that summarizes, uh, starts on three oh four. And and again, it's just a recap, uh, just wanted to make sure we we notate the accomplishments. Uh, capital projects take a long time. They lose interest and momentum for, uh, all but all of the staff that grinds it out. And, uh, also, we can lose track sometimes of the, uh, the overall big picture project costs. Um, so this is just to give a, uh, a chance to recap them, ask any questions you have of the completed projects, and then we'll be back in front of you in January for, uh, what's on, what's coming. But feel free to ask any questions that pop into your in your head. So, um, we do have a PowerPoint. It's just to give, whoa, it turned into font. That's all right. Yeah, that it it is. Yeah, the the font is a little different. So this isn't super essential to track along on the on the PowerPoint, just to, just some visual, it's kind of for the record. But, uh, the completed projects, the primary completed projects, the Public Works Operations Building, we had our, uh, uh, our little Christmas, uh, party last year. Uh, that was right when it was fresh. Oh, thanks. Um, and so I I think most of you were able to go out and check that. This Google, uh, uh, map shot shows the footing for the building, uh, in and the smaller building immediately to the north in the blue. Uh, can I just do something?
Yeah, I gotta share.
Okay. All right. All right, so there's two, two buildings, uh, that, um, were part of the project. Uh, the smaller building, uh, the fire district, uh, contributed funds to for a ten-year lease, so they use that for storage. The primary building houses our Public Works Operations. Uh, the total of the the entire project, design, engineering, build out, change orders, both buildings, uh, about a million and a half. Um, it's a a phenomenal building that will do us well for many, many, many years. Uh, it's gonna preserve a lot of our equipment that otherwise was outside. It gives us, uh, uh, our our SCADA and our controls growth. We have good, good technology in there. We completed attaching that whole facility to the city network as part of the project. So a lot of really good things, a lot of site improvements around it for drainage. Um, we we continue to, uh, I I think we'll have value in that for many, many, uh, decades probably to come.
Did we increase our generator capacity and fuel capacity in that project?
No, the wastewater plant has its own for the plant itself. Uh, this has a battery system that is very, uh, similar or identical, I think.
To City Hall.
The City Hall, so it it, because it does not have, um, systems operation. It doesn't have process, uh, uh, components to it. It's, um, you know, uh, working bays for storage. It's got a mezzanine for inventory, uh, that he'd been doing some great work on on organizing and some office and conference space. Uh, but, uh, no, no need for a backup beyond what similar to here.
So is that a different conversation that we had at one point in time in terms of increased, uh, fuel capacity?
Uh, yes. The Fuel Island, that I think that's what you're speaking of. Um, it's quite possible, um, that Fuel Island, um, could be, uh, ran off of the wastewater treatment plant's electricity, but doubtful. So then that project, um, conceptually, the design work was part of some early ARPA funded funding. Um, and so we're still finishing out every April. We have to submit, uh, reports for what we have not um, completed, uh, on that list, and the Fuel Island is one. So we have a, uh, final design project still pending with with branch. Actually, they sent us something last week that Brian and I need to look at, really just to get the site, um, schematic laid out about where it would be and some rough estimates to get us to grant application, you know, content. We we want to be able to have enough information on there to satisfy the ARPA funds requirement and to be ready and poised for, uh, grant applications. Because I think that was originally the, the, the anticipated funding source was external. It wasn't, uh, uh, planned to be done out of operational funds. So it's still, it's still there. There's a placeholder on kind of the the site master plan. We've got it. It's to the north of the middle building, um, is where we think that's gonna go for site circulation. So still on the table, but still a a design and seeking funding stage.
We we did at one point apply for a grant that we thought would fund it, and we were not granted that request, so.
You know, those resiliency grants, you know, with FEMA at the national level being completely up in the air, um, a lot of the, um, funding programs are just on kind of indefinite hold. Um, so it's it's unlikely that the sources that we would probably traditionally look for, uh, for funding that are, at least for now, not, uh, not available. But. Um. Okay. Okay. Uh, the other one is, uh, we've talked about it quite a bit, North Willamette, North Macy, North Harrison. That, uh, was a complete street reconstruction and addition of sidewalks on on North Willamette. Um, it was partially funded with, uh, ODOT small city allotment funds. Uh, that's the middle, uh, the middle photo there makes that horseshoe. Uh, that, uh, project, uh, I think turned out excellent. I I think one of the interesting things with, uh, infrastructure projects is the trailing, uh, private investment that comes with it. And obviously, on larger commercial, uh, areas of public investment, you you see large commercial development come with it. You know, a lot of times on purpose, urban renewal, that kind of thing. Um, it happens in residential as well, and we've seen an infill lot, uh, developed, uh, with a home build. We've seen several remodels either done or are on their way. So it it shows that the the public investment also drives, uh, private investment, and, uh, that neighborhood is really, uh, I think, looking good, and I think people are getting used to the new pattern of the of of what we put there. Uh, we still have a little bit of massaging we do every once in a while on that. But, uh, all in all, a a really quality project, the storm drain, um, uh, design works well. Um, for storm events, I think we're, uh, you know, pleased with that overall. Uh, that project ended up being just a little bit over a million when you add in the construction and the, uh, design work. Uh, and like I said, two hundred fifty thousand was from a, uh, state grant. The other one, uh, we've talked about using Counselor Bowman's, uh, term ad nauseam, which I agree. We've talked about Pavilion Park quite a bit. Uh, that one, the the photo is kind of cool. Brian and I were looking at that, and Megan, um, our, uh, Public Works dump truck is that red, red truck right in the middle. Um, so it was, uh, that was when we were prepping the, uh, pad for the restroom. Uh, so that was a cool action shot. Uh, that's the most active, uh, uh, Google map shot. We we just talked about this one last time, last meeting about the 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 project cost. Uh, again, all three of these, higher project costs than original estimates. Um, still high-quality worthwhile investments, I think, from our perspective. Um, and that is just, you know, the the phrase, I think, you know, candy bars aren't a quarter anymore. We're trying to recalibrate our brains to what, you know, what these projects really, even for us, you know, what, what they take. Uh, when we start estimating, oh, that'll be about this, like, you know, we have to. When we start estimating, oh, that'll be about this, like, you know, we have to dial it because they just are different pricing. The middle one, I'll just say for future street projects, it's a really good indicator because we we did this when we did the ODOT application that we didn't get granted this cycle. It's about two hundred fifty thousand a block face for a street reconstruction. So a quarter million a block. That's without sidewalks. That's just street, complete street reconstruction. That's not patch stuff. So just for a sense, when we start talking CIP later and we start talking street funding, it's a quarter million per block. And by the time we build the next one, it might be three hundred thousand per block. But that's just something to keep in mind. And that's partly why we do these recaps, to get a a sense of where.
That is, that is absolutely astounding.
Yeah.
And I think that that's an important message for us all to absorb and be able to talk about, you know, and people rightly say, you know, my street's falling apart and we need to have this done. Here's, here's about what it will cost.
And for context, you know, annually, the tough brings in about hundred and fifty to hundred and sixty thousand. So every two years of tough is one block of street reconstruction. That's a, you know, one way to, one way to think of it. Yep, so we'd love the money to stretch further, but it just doesn't. Okay, whoa, where are we at? Okay. All right. So those are the, those are the, those are the three primary completed projects. Obviously, we have a lot of kind of the stuff that's smaller capital, that's operations and maintenance. There's a lot of stuff that we don't talk about here. That that the Brian and team work on constantly. Some of them, by audit standard, you know, by by definition, meet the definition of capital. They don't make a capital list. They're just, they're fixed asset capitalizable, but they're not a capital project in of themselves. But these are the the primary projects. So then we have projects in progress. There are four, but kind of three. Stallings is, has two projects. They were broken out into phases. It's still continuing the the saga of of getting another source of water connected to the system. So we are now at the phase of the well three project where we're getting ready. The the building will show up in a few months, I think. The metal building has taken some delays. But a a lot of the site work has been done. The the line has been brought to the front of the property. So it's active construction for the treatment building, the pumping and equipment and the treatment equipment and the control equipment, the the SCADA. So all of that stuff, you can see on the on the slide there. That one also has the pad cut out so that it not too old of a of a aerial shot also. So it's in the back of the building. And then the the second half of that or the other piece that gets us to completion of the set of projects is the transmission line. So that's the 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 red going down stallings and and hooking towards town. That's a little under a mile between point eight and a mile, I think. And we are hopeful that we'll have some funding extension of our our water loan. That'll come back to you for approval. That would add to our debt a little bit, but it would add to our accessible funding to actually complete that. So that one has not been bid. The the work on the stallings property is underway, but the transmission line is yet to be bid. And we're not gonna bid that until we secure funding and you all approve it.
If I can, any updates on the timeline of the loan extension? Have we heard from the state? Are they being tapered? What's going on?
No, I think we're we're progressing as we expected. We had some additional stuff. We had to submit a pro forma for the water fund. We had to submit some edited language for the contract addendum. So the pro forma was accepted last week. There was a condition of the original loan about some of our metering of water. And we confirmed and clarified that we have completed that. It was from two thousand nineteen or twenty, so that cleared that condition off. So all things are cautiously pointed in the right direction, you know, in this environment, any environment, but especially this environment. You just don't know if funding is secured until, well, probably until you have it in your own account. It can kind of, it's elusive. But yeah, things are going as we as we hoped. I would guess, we were talking about it as a team this morning. January council meeting probably would have that back in front of you to to make a decision whether you you want to accept that additional million. And then we'll have the amounts about what that means to our our annual debt payments and all that to to help you in your decision. So on track, I think, is slow, but but steady, I suppose. Yep. Pullman Street Collector, we've talked about this one quite a bit. This one, we we scaled it back to be a phase one to make sure that it stays within our allotment that with the regional funding allotment, so we don't extend into our scarce local street fund resources right now. So that one is from Pearl to McKenzie. It it actually accomplishes some, some McKenzie Street improvements as well. Like, the engineer team has done a good job of trying to expand that and curl that out as far as they can for storm drainage and for the surface. We just finished the final review and it'll be submitted tomorrow to Lane County for the crosswalk and flashing beacons. We've done a couple rounds of edits to that document to really beef it up as much as we can. It's an uphill, like we talked about that. It's an uphill climb to get, it it doesn't meet the statistical component. But I think we have some other compelling cases to be made that that balance out the statistics that they that they look for. So that one should be bid in, should be here for council in March and constructed in the summer. Peak construction season and wrapped up by September. That's the goal. The final one of projects in progress, so the big stuff, is North Industrial paving and the Loop Path extension. The paving is complete as a whole new surface. It actually was more paving than I was even thinking. Really nicely done out there. And the, I don't know how many segments left of the concrete, the segment, I was there last week, you were there today or Monday. So striping is in. We had some fine tuning adjustments right where it butts in at the end to Trails End. We had to all, we wanted to alter how that parking and and the path integrate together. So we we made some adjustments there. It's, we think, there's probably some punch list items, but we think it functionally will be done right around Thanksgiving. So they're on the very tail end of pouring those final pieces. So a great project. It's gonna, it's gonna be a really very safe, very, I I think enjoyable way to access Trails End Park, a nice addition to our our Loop Path system. Then the next stuff is is, we have a couple projects that we paid for the design work. And the design engineering is done and we're just waiting for funding or or eventually using our own capital to to complete Dixon Street Waterline and South Skinner Street Reconstruction. And that South Skinner is the one that we applied for to the ODOT small cities that we did not get last cycle. Brian and I have pretty high confidence that 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 we have a good shot at it this cycle, this coming cycle. So we'll resubmit that same project that council already had okayed us to do. And I I think we got a decent shot of getting it, which is a really good one for for some of that south quadrant local roads. And then I I added on there some plans and we're going through one of them tonight. But the, we last July completed the water system capacity analysis. That really helps us kind of for regrouping and talking about next grouping of of capital projects in water after we finish what we just talked about here. It'll be a year or two of kind of planning and and organizing for the next chunk. Well, what's the best next chunk of projects to do for? Is it storage? Is it, you know, is it new supply? Is it, is it distribution looping? You know, what order do we do those in? And that probably means a a master plan update for water in the next couple of years. But the system capacity analysis was really, really helpful for us. You know, the the key takeaway for that water system is remember from July, the water system capacity analysis says we need more supply by two thousand thirty two. So when you're talking new supply and infrastructure to get that, that's like, you know, starting this year, next year to to have supply in place by two thousand thirty two. So that's a, it's it's a looming item, very doable. But we can't dilly dally or it becomes, you know, more of an emergency than it should be. So just something to keep in mind. And we'll talk about that more when we bring the the next CIP forward.
So a new well for that?
That, we don't know. That's the incremental approach. It's been pretty costly per gallon brought forward, you know, and that's different every time. You know, the other idea that, you know, that we did talk about and council gave kind of that conceptual okay to to kick the tires on is an EWEB intertie. I I think that that's what would come with the feasibility study that was done in two thousand thirteen for that needs to be updated. And then we need to do a water master plan update. The combination of those two, I think, will help, you know, wrestle with what is the right approach for supply.
And do we have an identified site if we did have a fourth well?
Well, this Stallings is designed to have a a second well on that site. So the treatment, the building and the and the equipment and the controls are all designed to bring in another, another well. So theoretically, that one would have a much lower cost per gallon added because we've, we've spent a lot of more infrastructure on this one in prep for the second supply being added.
Or is that part from the third well, which is underproducing from rejected?
It's the same site.
Yeah.
Same parcel, right?
Yep. So it would, like Adam was just saying, all the infrastructure is there. It would just be a matter of punching the well into the ground.
You're, you're, you're thinking.
It was underproducing.
If well three was underproducing, would well four underproduce also? And and that's, that's a.
There's, there is a likelihood, for sure. Or it could produce, you know, three times as much. It's a a roll of the dice at this point. I think once we get a little bit closer to that decision whether a fourth well, fourth, fifth well, or an intertie with EWEB, I think we would know more because I'm almost certain we'd probably do another test well onsite, just to see what we could find.
But, you know, bear in mind that that fourth well, whatever the cost of the fourth well and whatever the, whatever it produced, we will have by then already have done the transmission line that connects that site to the distribution system. We'll have already done the building. We'll already done the pumps. We'll already, we'll have done, you know, everything but, like Brian said, but pop the, pop that well. The the well, I think the well itself, for the well number three, that was right around a half a million.
I'm just trying to conceptualize it. It's a separate well from number three, but it's in the same location. How far apart would it be?
Hard to say, but probably no more than a hundred and fifty feet away from the current well.
There's rules, but you know, distance for property lines, that it has to be inset and all that stuff. So that's where the test well comes in. And, you know, the, so I think when you, when you look at that, that option, it would be a matter of looking at, you know, if you say, say it is the same amount. You know, a hundred and, you know, a hundred and fifty or so. So there's, you know, a total of three hundred from that site at a cost of adding the two together, you know, is a whole lot better number than just staying with well three and all the, all the infrastructure. But but yeah, it's a, it's not a, not a slam dunk proposition at all. You know, and the idea also maybe, maybe it's both. You know, it doesn't mean EWEB or, it it very well could be both. That the EWEB intertie could take, could take longer than two thousand thirty two. So there may be, you know, some good forecasting to or for much less total dollars out the door to add another hundred and fifty, maybe two hundred. Who knows? You know, you can get lucky, but probably get a hundred and fifty. And that then maybe makes our number, you know, two thousand thirty five instead of two thousand thirty two or or longer. And then that buys more time for EWEB or another alternate solution. So I wouldn't think we're, we're not necessarily talking about really a clearly divided one path or the other. But that'll take some other, other folks to to help us in, you know, mapping that all out.
And that's where the master plan comes in.
And just a little bit of a sidebar to that, too. You keep forgetting the name of the the division where we're going to help improve the water system.
OPB.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How does that fit into this improvement plan?
We'll, we'll talk about that when we present the next one. We've been searching and and we've been applying. We just talked about another grant today that it may or may not be a great fit because the total dollars are too low. But yeah, we keep applying for the federal congressionally designated spending, which is the new word for earmarks that and and have not yet to be successful. But that one is, you know, not far off of being, you know, we we pitch it when we, when we ask for funds as being nearly shovel ready, which it it is nearly shovel ready. You know, that one is probably between right now with three quarters of a million and a million. It probably, you know, it definitely goes with the master plan and has to be sorted out in a prioritization. Now, it's, it's, it's a different animal than supply and storage, that conversation about long term stuff. But it's no less essential for the conversation about where in the, where in the priority list it comes.
The last point on this is, I'm not sure that it was ever promised, but it seemed like it was, we're going to go for grants for this first. But ultimately, it was gonna come back to us to fund what needed to be done there.
Yep. Yeah, agreed. That's my understanding as well. The, you know, this doesn't help the the neighborhood. But I I think one of the driving forces of the timeline that we were operating under when we did the open house and all that stuff was paving of their their roads from Lane County was eminent. That is unfortunate, but fortunate, no longer imminent. They've, you know, the Lane County has told us that they've, you know, they were retracting their transportation budgets or, you know, are trashed as well. And that one has not made the cut. So that one's been deferred a bunch. So we don't have that, that kind of that push to say, get this water stuff done before paving comes. Otherwise, we'd be cutting into paving. So the timeline has expanded a little bit on that regard. And I, and I think from a systems maintenance, we haven't been too, I probably shouldn't say that aloud. Uh, yeah, it it hasn't, it hasn't done us too bad.
Hold that thought.
Yeah, yeah. But we we do, there, it is an essential part of the distribution system. So we'll have categories on the master plan. You'll have supply, storage, you know, transmission, distribution. And that's, that's gonna be a key, probably, I would assume, the number one item in the distribution category. But then you have to kind of assemble them all and then see what kind of funds we have.
They're getting the distribution out of the current supply. So that's not the issue. It's, it's the lines to, to their.
Yeah, inside their parts of the transmission line that extends to them is also not very old. I think it was oh eight. I mean, it's in fine shape. It's in, in same size, fine, all of that. So it really is just the internal system, distribution system. And again, the the last about a year and a half, two years ago was probably about seven fifty. So my guess would be we're, you know, pushing a million on the project now. But, yep, it'll need to be sorted. So, yeah, the rest of more, the wastewater capacity analysis, we're gonna talk about that one next. I'll skip over that one, Stormwater Master Plan. I gave the executive summary to you in the last meeting, just to be kind of prepped. We had some edits that we that we made and gave back to to Branch. And so I had thought originally we'd be on for December adoption, but that's gonna be January. Just to have time for those edits to come back to us and and finalize that. We wanted, there was not, nothing super major, but enough that we wanted to just put a, just a last little timeout before we brought that forward. Great, great document. I think it'll be very useful for us. So look at, look for that in January. Water Management Conservation Plan, same thing. We are behind on that one. So we are finalizing some of the data needs. And same thing, that'll be on, we'll have two, two large master plan type documents on on the January meeting. Just so we can get that done. That one is, the Water Management Conservation Plan is a little more regulatory pressing even than the Stormwater Plan. I think Stormwater's been going the longest, but both important, both important documents. So that's really the recap. And again, just wanted to mark the accomplishments, recap the dollars, make sure we're all clear that those are great projects have been completed. And it's always nice to to actually cross them off the list and move on to the next. That's, we'll be showing you the next in January for the CIP. With that, we can roll straight forward to the wastewater system capacity analysis. I'll talk just a second about it and then Brian can go through the, the, that that plant that he knows inside and out. So the the main thing I wanted to add on this one is. Three thirteen is what I have. Yes, the, the, the report from the consultant is three fifteen, but the staff report starts on three thirteen. Yep. And I'll try and say that each time when I start. I should do that. This was earmarked for several years in the CIP for sixty thousand. This was earmarked for several years in the CIP for sixty thousand dollars as a placeholder for a master plan update. When I got here and and Brian is giving me the download on on everything that's going on, which was a lot. You know, had to had the conversation of, well, do we do we really, is a master plan update the right thing? Or is there some other thing that is more suited to what we need right now? And Brian worked with Kennedy Jenks and ended up with a, I think, a really smart. Proposal to limit their work to a capacity analysis. And so it's it's a pretty technical document, a lot of calculations that ends up with some conclusions. And I'll let Brian talk about the conclusions. It, I I think it was smart that it 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 took less time. It saved us, you know, a bunch of study money. And I think it informs when and what our master plan update will ultimately need to look like. So. I I think that ends up being a rugged. So it was earmarked as sixty thousand. I think we spent, I double checked. You were right. Right at fifteen thousand on the on the document. So it's a it's a relatively thin document for fifteen thousand, but there's a lot of work that goes into that. And then for trivia, I added at the end, I had asked the the consultants for a schematic, just to say, how does our system work? And that's what you have there. It's not really part of the the technical memorandum, but it was a an add on deliverable that I asked for, just just so we could. Have a schematic for how that thing works. And Brian can answer anything about that schematic.
I can probably draw it for you with my eyes closed.
Free of charge for the schematic.
Probably, it was probably.
They took it right out of the drawing. So, yeah.
But I'll I'll turn it over to Brian, you know, the the there it ended up a bunch of calculations, conclusions. I'll I'll just say that without maybe. Too much spoiler alert is, you know, the conclusions were consistent with what what Brian had had thought and what has been kind of. In that CIP conceptual planning. So no surprises and 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 boring in a good way. In that it was right, went right along with what we thought was the case, but. I want to go ahead.
Yeah, I I I don't really want to go over too much of the the data that's in the report. Because I want to kind of keep it. User friendly, I guess, is the right word to use. A lot of flows and loads calculations go into this. So. We look at not just how much water, how much wastewater comes into the treatment plant a day. That's part of it. But we also look at peaking factors, you know, and how the treatment plant's going to react when all of a sudden it gets, you know. A mass load at the plant. And I think. I'd really like to focus on the conclusions of the report. Now, if anybody has any questions about the data that's in there, I could certainly. Happy to go over that, but there's a lot of that that data. And if you guys have any questions after tonight, feel free to reach out. But like Adam was saying, the conclusions weren't anything. There was nothing that we didn't kind of figure. This is what it was gonna, this is what they were going to come up with, was that the treatment plant. As designed will get us close to the twenty year mark. And that twenty year mark is out there at the twenty thirty three. So the plant went online in July of twenty thirteen. And right now we don't have much more flow than we did. That after the first year operation in in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. So the plant is is working exceptionally well. You can kind of see. The way that the way that the treatment plant operates right now, there's a couple of different parts that are probably not in this report and that's. Coupled with the the collection system we have, the step system. That actually helps the efficiency of the treatment plant, right? So because of the step system coupled with the type of treatment that we have. The affluent loading going out the door is is. Spectacular. One of the things that is not in the report is. We talk about, we've talked about this time and time again, the council level of. You know, the life, the life expectancy or the lifespan of the membrane, the cassettes that are in the at the treatment plant right now. Right now. We're we're going into the thirteenth year of operations. The life expectancy of those membranes is seven to ten years. So. They're they're still producing, you know, class A water. We don't, there's no violations with DEQ. We're not even close to our permit limits. So those membranes are doing exceptionally well. Uh, in this environment that they're in. That being said, they will age out and they will age out most likely around the time that. The projected growth is saying you need to add a second cassette to each train. So that's that's not really in the conclusions of the report. The conclusions are saying you need to add that second cassette. By this date with projected growth. So what I'm saying is, at some point, it's not just. Two cassettes get added, it's also two cassettes get replaced. So that costs, when we talk about the costs of replacement, it's double that.
They're about how much a piece?
Well, by the time we get to replacement, you're probably looking at. Seven hundred and fifty thousand for the four. Yep, is my guess. And it could be seven hundred and fifty to a million.
Likely, and we'll talk about this, of course, in the January CIP, when we'll show, we'll still show it as a, you know, not in the first two years, but in in some of it, it'll be in the plan. You know, depending on on consultants and and expertise, we may, you know. Do to one year and to the very next and and slightly stagger them from a rates perspective. But we also may be advised that that we're better off to just do the whole thing. So that's TBD probably on the timing, but you know, to Brian's point, they're going to be close together regardless. Whether it's staggered by a year, it happens that our our regular maintenance replacements. Are going to line up with the the capacity timeline for additions. So you replace and you add, and that gives us more capacity. So those those in our case are are pretty closely sandwiched. So more to come on that, but it it just really changes. It doesn't change the totals much. It just changes the. Kind of our our financial peaking about, you know, where those capital costs come.
From a budgeting standpoint, do you. Make provisions in your budgeting for long range replacement items such as this, that there is. Money set aside for these things or just something that comes up at the time that's needed to budget for it?
So that there's and Adam, Adam can jump in here at any time. There's no dedicated reserve or membrane replacement. I think what council decided to do many years ago was say, we're going to have. I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in contingency would purchase a cassette. You know, and if we if we had an emergency at the plant where we had catastrophic failure, we could dip into the contingency. And that's how we would manage that. So. That's kind of a partial answer to your question. The long range is the CIP.
So that's, yeah, we project that out. So. You know, the the reserve in any of our funds is is fund balance. So, you know, as we. Hopefully, everybody, I say it over and over, as we recall from the the budget process, we spend more in wastewater than we bring in. Annually. So we are eating into that fund balance. I think that's partially, you know, that's not necessarily a problem. It is long term. That can't be the the standard way of of going about it. I'm not sure the history, you know, too far beyond, you know, I'd have to look at a longer term trend of fund balance, but. In the last four or five years, we are spending more, we're spending down some fund balance. It still has a decent fund balance to it. But, you know, in order, you you basically, as Brian said, your 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 planning is your CIP. You project out and you don't, you don't appropriate money and save it. That's not how the the budgeting works. You. You actually rate design it. So that's part of when you do a rate design, you look at your your capital needs for a twenty year period. You look at your operating costs and and then and you you look at your your revenues in, your projected growth by customers, so your revenue forecasting. And all of that comes into play to say, here's what the rates need to be to absorb. The hits of capital that happen over a twenty year period. And usually those twenty year periods match your your master plan. So that's why you have master plans. You have a master plan that then drives your rates. And then that. Gets you that when we do performance, like we did for the water for that million dollars we're talking about, that's what they're looking at on the performance is. Does the fund? Does it hold its own weight over the over that period that that you're borrowing money? So ultimately, it's it's likely that we're going to have a borrowing and the the challenge with that is. We already have debt and it's that layering. I've talked about it at budget, you know, it's debt layering is a problem. And I've been saying at the state level, it's it's, you know, access to funds is a problem. But what's more of a problem is even if you get those funds, almost every city already has debt in these funds. And now you're talking about. Layering a debt on on top of another one. So that is rates. So ultimately, the answer to the question is rates. And because that is the only answer by law, that's the only, that's the only answer, because rates have to. Be such that they support the the cost of of operating the utility. So. You know, that then then I can just throw the final, you know. Blow punch on here. The haymaker is that we've talked about this too, is the urban renewal expires. Uh, when it reaches nine million and and it exists to transfer funds. From that tax increment financing from from that to the city and into the wastewater fund. So we're going to have kind of this. Kind of perfect storm where we have a lot of this stuff at probably the four years from now mark. Where forty percent of the debt service is currently being paid by the urban renewal, that goes away. So forty percent more debt, about four hundred thousand, is going to need to come from rates. And we have this capital coming close into that window. So.
And that's when your term is up.
So, no, it 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 really is. It's it's and it's the challenge with everybody, right? It's 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 capital. It's capital and and rates are are how. Capital is paid for and you amortize the capital expense over a period, just like you do a thirty year loan on your house and it. Eight years now normal on a new car and, you know, it used to be five and you you spread it out further and further. And then, of course, on the flip side, you run the risk of spreading it out so far that you're paying for your your debt. After the useful life of the asset that you use the debt for.
And on your car and your mortgage, you don't factor in when the furnace goes out or when the septic tank needs replaced. Those are foreseeable, but not always calculated into your rates.
Right. We we try and do O and M, right? For us, you know, the the components of a rate model are operations and maintenance. Uh, which includes staffing and 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 all of that and and capital and debt. Those are the three things that go into a rate model. And then there's, you know, hopefully you estimate some of those, right? You you could have some bad, bad times or more goes wrong and blowers and. You know, other things go that you that you think i- is fine and it 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 wouldn't go in the life cycle analysis. But, yeah, it's a.
Terms of a new well, for example. That's not into your calculations for your rate.
That will.
Be water, yeah.
Separate from wastewater.
So in the in the water fund, we have some, we have some. Similar, probably bigger dollars, but we probably have some flex, more flexibility in the timing and how we stagger and how we. How we manage them on wastewater with the the issue that we're trying to convey here is that. It's leading itself towards all of these things clumping up really close to the same time.
And what what?
So I don't want to interrupt you, Brian, but I I I mean, this is, it it seems to me. Simple that I am that we we have a need for two membrane filters within the next four or five years, right? Even given the current load that we have, right? And that the only need for the additional two would be in the event that we do ultimately have that hundred and two acre. Or hundred and seven acre development take place.
And and the, what is it, one, one point six percent growth per year?
Right, right. But but my my point is, is that and it doesn't take long to put these membranes in place, right? Okay, so we get a potential buyer, potential developer of that parcel. And we have plenty of time at that point to be able to put those membranes in place. And also, it's not unusual at all to. You know, negotiate with the developer of that land that, hey. Our existing system, our wastewater system can't take on this additional capacity. So as part of the overall plan here. Call it an SDCV, whatever you want to call it, you're going to have to pony up three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for these two additional membranes.
Yeah.
You you can't put that on the developer. There's that's not.
Done all the time.
And and I. We can have it offline. That's that's not how it's done. SDCs. Right.
Not an SDC, but it it's the cost of doing business. I've had to put in streets before. I've had to do.
Right, there's incremental.
You know, public improvements and that would be one of them.
So. There are takings laws, right? So there there are anyway, that, yes, the development, what goes on there is probably more so to the collection system than it is to the treatment. Plant. The the collection system, absolutely, there are some. Some things that 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 property will likely have to do on their own and they will be paying SDCs. And the cartridges for the new are are growth, are growth related projects. So the SDCs are eligible to fund those. So. Yeah, there's there is.
Mislabeled it as an SDCV, but it is a cost of, you know, developing the property. You know, if you're if your existing system at the city can't take it and you coming into town makes it so it can't happen. You know, I'm the developer. I'm saying, okay, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in light of the overall cost of this project, no problem, all right? I will gladly fund that to make sure that I've got sufficient sewer capacity. And that's assuming that the kind of development that takes place there actually needs sewer capacity. It could be a, you know, some sort of.
I I that's what I was just gonna say.
Two toilets in it, you know, I mean, literally, I mean, in the coming years, there may not be a need for that significant of sewer.
Yeah, I I think that the the hundred and seven acres is. And this is just in my mind's eye, is kind of separate from the overall growth or. The growth of the of the city, because it's it's. Hard to say what is going to land in the hundred and seven acres. Um, it, you're absolutely right. It could be, you know, a low impact warehouse. It doesn't have, you know, has fifteen employees.
If 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 the council approves a zone change, it's not, it's not zoned for them. Right? It's it's owned for a higher level of use. So I think we're getting a little bit off track to how we would fund the incremental costs. Obviously, the the. The actual project development. Has a role in how all of the totality of the sewer fund capital projects. You know, work and how they get funded. But also that project, that hundred and seven acres likely doesn't develop all at once, right? It develops twenty twenty acre pieces over a ten to fifteen year period.
Lots of lots. Point. But we know we have to plan ahead that. And I I will give kudos to our our public works staff that those membranes. Are doing as well as they're doing.
Yeah, and and that's, I'm, that's what I was gonna say is, we we try. We spend a lot of time with the preventative maintenance at the plant. It's our our highest valued asset at this time. So we we want to make sure that asset lasts as long as we we can possibly make it last. Uh, you know, there's mechanical parts there and mechanical parts, they fail. You know, we. We just had to order two junction boxes for heat tracing. It goes around the treatment plant and each one of those boxes was almost two hundred dollars a piece. And that's just for a junction box. So, you know, tho- those costs do add up, but when we take care of. So instead of saying, well, we're just not gonna, we're just not gonna do that. And we don't, we don't deal with the heat trace when we get a cold snap and something breaks that's. Ten thousand dollars because we didn't spend the two hundred dollars to replace a junction box. That's our mentality in public works is we want. We want to make sure that the place runs.
we want to make sure that the place runs as well at year twenty as it did at year one. And and that's what we're trying to do. And I think we're doing a really good job of doing that. And and just to clarify, this capacity analysis is not talking about funding, right? It's it's just talking about what the system, what the system needs to to meet the projected growth. So those are hypothetical averaging growth, one and a one point six percent of uh population growth. And it had, we asked them to calculate um a very generic um growth over time at the hundred and seven acre site. That's just to give us a a ballpark idea of at what year plus or minus the sys- the the plant itself, just the plant, not the collection system, the plant needs to to have expanded capacity. How we go about that, there there's a lot of conversation. What my my point on the rates is it never doesn't touch rates. You know, how much it touches rates based on how we spread it out, where we get the funding for, how much can be grant funded for, you know, in this environment, not much. In in five, seven year environment, that that could be different. Uh you know, I don't think you count on that. There's SDCs, there are developer, um you know, there there are developer contributions. There they have, there's a lot of legal requirements about proportional uh that that they have to be proportional to the impact. Sometimes those are in lieu of SDCs because they are actually doing something. Uh and there's some state law that that goes into how you you can't charge both. So there's a lot of ways of how we go about funding it. It will impact rates undoubtedly. The good part, I I guess, that maybe got lost in some of the the technical is the plant itself, aside from the membranes. There's some blowers, there's some other things. It is a great facility. It was a great investment when it went in two thousand fourteen. It has the ability to, as designed, grow uh and and take on uh the foresee, the growth that we're seeing in this twenty year horizon, twenty twenty five to twenty forty five is the twenty year uh horizon that this capacity analysis looked at.
Do you have
Uh no, I just fall, I I wa- I wasn't meaning to sound argumentative, but I it's that we're going to be talking in January about capital improvement projects and budgeting for those. And I just wondered, does the additional two membranes warrant being put in that category? I mean, yeah, we know that it might cost this much in the event that the hundred and seven acres gets developed. But does that warrant including that in the CIP? And then, you know, like you said, it relates to rates. It's just going to make the rates that much higher for something that may never happen um or
Well, that's that's kind of how they always do, right? So that's how the water master plan, some of those projects didn't happen. They were part of the rate design that built the rate model that we're living in now. So they you, they always do um get factored in because those are land infrastructure in the in the twenty year horizon. Now, a lot of things are variables with the rates themselves, how fast the customer growth happens. There's more customers to pay the bill. That that brings revenue faster than what the projected might originally have been. Lots of lots of variables at play. Um I the the council ultimately makes a decision about where they think that thing should, project should be in the CIP. We're going to provide, you know, our own expertise and expertise of of consultants that are reviewing our systems and reviewing kind of industry standard um uh materials. And then say, based on all of this, this is the year we think it you need to plan for it. Now, we know that all all stuff has a plus minus uh years in it. Um and the lag, could we do it in in two thousand thirty, you know, six, thirty seven? Um probably, we know that we can't wait that long on the replacement membranes. Um, yeah, we'll have to have a conversation and the the CIP, the horizon, uh it may be just off the five year horizon. Um but the twenty year horizon is how you do your rates. And you don't want to have rates that don't take that into account and then have to jack them typically. Councils can decide that. Uh you typically, you 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 anticipate and you incrementally collect four things out in the future. So when they're going up, you're not seeing two percent, two percents for five years and then, you know, twelve, 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 and and then and then flattening out. Depends, depends on how you your your desired methodology for rates and all of that will
I want to remind all of us that staff makes recommendations and does the foundational documents. But we, as council, make the final decisions in terms of budget, in terms of CIP.
Yep.
Terms of when things are funded and how they are funded.
I I have a somewhat easier question, I hope. Do we have a plan in place for what? What happens should a membrane fail in the meantime?
Uh yeah, um uh the short answer is yes. Uh there's two trains that run kind of redundantly. Um depending on when that catastrophic failure happens. If it's in the summertime, most of the load can go through the the other train. So short term, uh we can run on one uh one train. Um but not through uh the winter, because we do have a little bit of I N I that it does increase uh the flows and loads at the plant. Um so like I was saying in the beginning, um if we do have a failure of uh one of the cassettes, um and and we're talking catastrophic, right? Because a cassette can be pulled out, modules can be pulled out and replaced per, right? So, yeah, so it's not, uh we're not, if we have uh fiber failures, um those can be done individually. There's, you know, like thirty eight hundred fibers in a in a cassette. So we can go through there and individually snip fibers if we have failures um um and and fix those. Um but we haven't, uh to put this in perspective, the city of Pendleton's drinking water uh plant has the same cassettes that we do. They do fiber replacements weekly. We're on year thirteen and we have not not done one fiber uh failure fix. That's almost unheard of. And and I think it's because of the way that we are treating those those cassettes. We treat them very um like they're a newborn baby. And uh we do all of the preventative maintenance that we're supposed to do. Now, we have the capability of doing um taking fibers out that fail.
I I am grateful for that. Thank you for the work that you do. I won't take up any more time, but I'll reach out individually because I have more questions, but I won't take up any more time here.
Hopefully, we, I've done a fairly good job. I I know that this uh um report from Kennedy and Jinx, there's a lot of detail in it. Um and I'm, like I said, I'm more than happy to go over all of that, those data sets with you guys uh individually. Um but to go over it in one evening, um I I think we would just get lost in the minutia of it.
I would, I would agree. That was hard reading when I was reading there.
The conclusion
I don't understand all of this, so.
I think, I think what the, at the end of the day, the the conclusion is the plan is running fine. The loads are are acceptable and we have room to expand up to a certain point. And that certain point is out there looming in the the five year uh uh five year projection. And really, of the three uh conclusions, number one is is the one that's the focus of all of our conversation here. Um and and the one that has the shortest um uh timeframe, but they all have um good uh content to them. Um, you know, and and the system is more than just the membranes, but the membranes are the the, you know, the key piece that drive um our um our current operations and then and future growth.
The bottom line, don't have to go and get more borrowed water this week.
No.
No.
Okay.
And that's, that's not, again, that's not wastewater. That's the water supply. Two different, two different things. But I think maybe we're almost at the point we could drink the wastewater.
Very close. That's not far off for everybody.
It is not.
Yeah. So that's that.
Thank you for that.
I appreciate the questions. And and again, on the funding, financing side, you know, he's, Brian's got all the technical stuff. I'll I'll try and answer any money questions uh that come about and um, you know, rate remodeling and and how how we try to plan for those and and smooth out um, you know, timing bumps. And that's that's really what the goal is, is to account for all those costs over a long period of time and smooth that out. And debt is a way to smooth that out. So there's a couple of different ways to smooth that out.
Um, lots more to, lots more discussion
Yep.
in the near future.
Yep. So I had a couple of things on the administration report, if uh if we're still okay on time to to hit a couple of highlights. Um, one that relates right to this, that I thought we'd just drop right into it on number one, it it's uh it's in the red folder, the uh city administration report. Um wastewater treatment plant training, uh just a background uh info. There's a two day training that Brian has coordinated for his team. Super important training. Uh we get that through our our monitoring consultant uh contract that we have. They'll be on site. And it kind of um leads uh the steps in our our public works training uh objectives of of really having a a highly technical qualified staff, because everybody on the team, um, you know, when they're running, they they rotate uh duty uh weekends, evenings. So they may be called upon to at least do some initial triage of the wastewater plant. And uh having some knowledge of that uh that Brian has set up is great, and it it just fits with what we're trying to do with that team. Um leaf collection, just add it's um a a little summary at the back of the city administration report uh on what we're doing on on social media and um and the website uh for leaf pickup program, just so you're up to speed. Um and uh another one is park restrooms. We've talked about this. We've had uh as as everybody does. Um, you know, occasional vandalism with that, and we've been probably a little uh a little lax on on not having those locked even in the middle of the night. So we have uh acquired and and Brian's team is nearly finished installing these auto door lock systems. I think they're great. Uh they can run on schedules. Uh so the uh park and tree committee a a number of months ago made a recommendation uh for the timing um uh when they're open, when they're closed. So we're going to go with that, you know, winter, closing them at eight. And um in the summer is at ten, and they are a schedule that can be altered, you know, ad hoc when we have uh events and and things that uh easily can be um, you know, turned off for that, you know, extended uh for certain things, but the standard hours are going to be that way. We don't know if a hundred, well, we know that not a hundred percent of our vandalism problems happen in the time that we're going to now have them locked. But um I, you know, definitely some of that has occurred and uh some permanent signage will go with it uh here shortly. So that's one that's been on. We've talked about it a lot at Park and Tree uh and I think is a really uh great
And that that will be both at um Pavilion and at Norma Pfeiffer.
Correct. Yep. All four of them will have it by end of next week, I think.
Yes.
And then one on the second page uh hits Mary, your comment earlier on on being the dark season. Um, we have a a a contract, a little inse- uh energy incentive contract for uh with Pacific Power uh for LED bulb replacement for the downtown lights. Um, you know, it's, it it's intended to be a swap, uh you know, uh way less wattage, but a a total light output that's equivalent. It's typically wider light, so it actually is brighter. I think it's from a safety standpoint. I think there'll be a noticeable difference. Um and that uh that program, they're going to be uh running through town, uh replacing those uh starting in the week of the seventeenth. Um, it's got about a four year payback. Um and, you know, tha- after that, you know, the savings kind of pays for themselves over 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 time. We get, we go into the black on having a net utility savings for the, in the street fund for streetlights. We have a number of bills that are just streetlights.
Uh that that will be just on the the main streets, the the main
Right.
streetlights.
That was my question. It's not going to be in the neighborhoods, right?
Uh the the, it's the total number of uh fixtures, Brian, I don't know if you could help, um that that we operate with Pacific Power. I don't believe we have, do we have EPED? Light, streetlights?
Yeah, we we're not talking about Austin.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's uh North Lamont, uh Van Dyne, South Lamont.
Right.
We moved here, those lights were so bright and unfortunately you came out and put some shields on them, so they weren't necessarily going into uh your windows at night. Uh and I think you lowered the wattage as well at that time, so.
Did you have a a question?
No, is it our our antique or kind of lights that they're going to be replacing?
There's nothing, nothing's getting, nothing's getting replaced other than um, I believe it's a picture of ball.
Inside those antique lights?
Yeah, the shell stays.
Yeah.
Yep.
Aesthetically, nothing's changing other than
The color of the light.
Yeah, the color of the light.
That bright white, cool white light is gonna look really funny in those antique.
We'll, we'll see, I guess. We we see.
We have no choice, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess part of the trade off is, yeah, more light being good for safety, but the the trade off of ambiance. Um and and that's, we, you know, the traffic safety ad hoc committee had a had a recommendation for that uh for enhanced lighting in downtown. And yeah, we'll we'll see what, if there's any adjusting that that may need to be made. But um, you know, from a financial standpoint, it's um we foot the bill minus the uh energy trust incentives. And then, you know, they they end up uh reducing our our consumption uh costs on our bills, and that's that's all paid through the street fund. And then along with that is uh Okay. Um then we also, along with that LED energy efficiency, we're we're pursuing some grant funds for EV charging at IOF uh for uh just to have one publicly available charging. I think that's good from a a tourism and and economic development uh standpoint and have that available and and both Pacific Power and ODO Oregon Department of Energy have some programs for that. So just want to highlight those. Though the financials are available for you, um we just um uh today or tomorrow, I'll be getting the the draft, um the draft financials for October. Uh and then right in front of that, right, uh the council meeting look ahead. I just wanted to, again, go remind you that, you know, if you're looking for what we have on the docket in the coming months, it it juggles around based on, you know, other um other factors of, some of these are are driven by others, not us uh always. Um but just wanted to show the layout of what we've got in front of us from now through budget, and a lot of them are are really contingent, you know, they they need to be done before budget, uh so we know uh what we're what we're budgeting for. So um I'm trying to uh update these probably about every two weeks, uh kind of after. My my cadence so far is just after a meeting, the next, the next day, I'll take the the meeting off that we just finished and then update and extend uh for meetings that we uh that we have going on. No work sessions in uh November, December. Uh but we do have a revenue subcommittee meeting. We have Park and Tree, we have Planning Commission. Um so we're we're plenty busy, but no second council meeting on the docket for the next two months due to the holidays.
Work never stops, does it?
It's always going.
Always going.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hanks on anything? Everybody taking a look at the balances and finances? Any questions on those?
I'm assuming the big red number in the I think it's the cash balances is due to property tax revenue or like thereof?
Exactly. Yeah, the the pending revenue. It is not showing up yet. Yep.
Right.
Yep, we'll see that soon. Yeah, that red will get fixed here uh in in next couple of months. Yeah.
Yeah, that that's what I had assumed. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't unexpected.
Yep. No, and and just as a reminder, the the actual bank accounts aren't separated by fund. So we we aren't in a negative actual cash position in 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 any of our banking. Um, those are, uh but but for accounting purposes, they're tracked by fund, but um true bank account, we're not in the red in any bank accounts.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Many rumors started on that.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Okay, um any updates? Lay us on updates, council comments.
I did send a brief succinct follow up email to RTD. Um actually, this afternoon, expressing our continued commitment to to helping the process move along, asking for an update. I did let him know that uh if there was anything that I could do individually or the council collectively to help move the process along, that we would be willing to do that. Um and I would assume I will hear something if not by the end of the week, probably by Monday or Thursday of next.
Thank you very much, and thank you for staying on that. Councillor Myers, anything from you?
I don't, huh?
Council Lehman, no? Council Wells?
No.
I will give you a brief update, I, I did go to the, um, Metropolitan Policy Committee meeting on the sixth of this month. Um, they're doing long-term planning goals. And they're doing, uh, in January, they will have a draft of, for the STIP, which is, all right, you gotta help me with all of it, that's the strategic plan. It's like our CIP, but it's, it's a little different language, thank you for that. I, I, I get lost in their alphabet soup sometimes, so they're, they're doing that. And that'll be county and then local projects. Um, Lane County projects, at this point, they are working at filling vacancies since the funding package passed. Of course, it's still a little bit up in, up in the air, but they are looking at filling vacancies, uh, critical positions and at the M V. Because they've had to cut back hours and, and things like that. So that was the big thing from MPC, is just that they're doing the long-term planning goals and, um, looking at their dip. Their, their project improvement plan, so, um, hopefully, you know, again, things are, are up in the air, we are living in sort of interesting times. And there are always two sides to every coin, at least. Uh, I think some coins have more than two sides, apparently, but anyway, we'll see. The governor did sign the, the bill into law, nothing goes into effect, I think, until January. But there is, um, movement to hopefully bring that to the vote, to the people. We'll see, we'll see what happens, nothing, nothing in this world is free anymore. I don't know that it ever was, but it isn't now. Council Smith, do you have anything that you'd like to share with us?
Um, pretty much our discussion was about the recommendation to come to council for the, um, fountain issue. Um, Parks Committee is continuing, they did work party, they are going to take December off. And then they will look at January and what they want to do next, but they had about eight hours in volunteer time for September. I mean, October, sorry.
October, whatever, these months keep flying by, don't they?
They do.
Yes. Okay, well, if nothing else, for the good of the order, I will adjourn our meeting at seven thirty. Thank you all for being here, have a marvelous.